Heavenly Father, we thank you for the guidance you're giving us tonight in doing the business of the city. We ask for your protection of all of our peace officers within the city and our students. We ask you to guide us out of the first two commandments you gave us, which is, "Love you first, and then love our neighbors as ourselves." We are entrusted to do the business of the city. We will do it with sound minds and with the love and compassion that goes along with it, too. We pray this in your name. Amen.
May the council members join me up for the presentation.
Why don't you let me sit down here?
We're going to go ahead and we're going to be providing a presentation of proclamation for wildfire prevention month, and what I'd like to do is ask Chief Dan Hanson to come on up. Yeah, no, what I'm going to do is I'm just going to give a little bit of the prologue, but what I would like to do, Chief, if you wouldn't mind, is just give an overview of kind of what we're trying to do. The highlight of this is it's Wildlife Awareness Week. I had...
Fire.
What's that?
Wildfire.
Wildfire. I was in wildlife yesterday. Wildfire today. So it's Wildfire Awareness Week, and when I had the honor of being on the Orange County Fire Authority, one of the big programs they had was that Ready, Set, Go. And so what I'd like to do is have the Chief talk a little bit about that and what this means to our community as we proclaim that for the week.
Okay. The Ready, Set, Go is a program about two years ago started, and it's basically as a result of those devastating fires that happened in Australia. Was that Black Thursday, I think, is when those fires started? And dozens and dozens of people died in those fires because they stayed with their property too long. And Ready, Set, Go is basically get your property ready, brush clearance, hardening your structure, get rid of, if you can, get rid of wood shakes, shingles, those kind of things, clearing out vegetation, flammable vegetation from around the structure, and get set to go. Getting set meaning having valuable paperwork, medicines, cell phones, computers, pets, et cetera, ready to go when you know a fire is approaching, and then go is get the heck out before it approaches. And you might be thinking, here in Los Alamos, what does Wildfire Awareness Week have to do with us here in town? Well, it's more or less an awareness for everybody. And I'm going to read you a little thing here that I pulled off the Internet from a fire that was on a long time ago, and I know Marilyn, you'll remember it. On April 21st, 1982, a major wind-driven fire broke out in the area of Ball Road in Euclid, not far from here, just right down the road. Jerry, you were probably a little tiny girl back then, but... That 5:42 a.m., 60 mile-an-hour winds caused a palm tree in the area of Ball Road in La Guerra to strike live electrical wires, causing sparks to fly into wood shake roof of nearby apartment complex. Within minutes, blocks of apartments were ignited as the fire spread and firefighters battled to contain the blaze. Over 350 firefighters from Orange County and Los Angeles County responded to that fire. Later that day, as the winds decreased, firefighters were able to control the blaze, but not until 534 apartment units had been destroyed. Fifty-one other buildings were damaged or destroyed. Twenty-two vehicles were lost, and property damage was in excess of $50 million. The good news is no lives were lost, or there were no serious injuries. But it can happen here. You know, we've all experienced the San Ana winds, you know, 60 mile-an-hour-plus winds, and so it can happen here. So it's just mainly an awareness for the weather conditions that we get here in Southern California.
So as we've stated, we're going to proclaim this week, May 6th through the 12th coming up actually, as Wildfire Awareness Week. Chief, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Chief, I think you may have my sheet in your board. Yeah. We... You want to take a look? All righty. We're going to go ahead and ask Marjorie Boyd to come on up. So Marjorie's joining us this evening as we proclaim tonight the DMV Donate Life to Ambassador Marjorie Boyd. And this is a very special evening, a very special proclamation. So this one, I actually want to read a little bit, if you're okay.
That's fine.
More than 100,000 individuals nationwide and more than 20,000 in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list. And then it goes on, it says, "A single individual's donation of a heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, small intestines can save up to eight lives. Donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of up to 50 others. And a single blood donation can help these three people in need. Millions of lives each year are saved and healed by donors of organ, tissues, bone marrow, and blood. And the spirit of giving and the decision to donate are not restricted by age or medical condition. Nearly 9 million Californians have signed up with the state-authorized Donate Life California Registry to ensure their wishes to be organ and tissue donors are honored. California residents can sign up with the Donate Life Recovery Registry when reapplying to renew your driver's license. Therefore, it'll be resolved in recognition of the National Donate Life Month, the month of April 2012, we hereby proclaim DMV Donate Life California Month in the city of Los Alamos. And in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for renewing their driver's license ID." So with that, Marjorie, I just ask you, would you like to say a few words?
Our organization is aiming for 20,000, 20 million in donors in 2012, but 21, 12 million in California is our goal. We are having a walk-run coming up at University of California Fullerton on the 28th. It's not too late to sign up. Just go to the website and Donate Life, and you can sign up. All of us that are connected with the volunteers and those that are working for them are connected in one way or another with someone that has either been a recipient or a donor for donating life. And I've had both sides of it. Back 19 years ago, my mother died of cancer, and at that time, I could only donate her eyes. Now, I could have donated tissue and things like that. But the other way I've connected is via a recipient, not me, fortunately, but my recently passed-away ex-brother-in-law is a heart recipient, was a heart recipient for seven years. He lived with that heart. Usually, they have to fly to get the heart. His was three blocks away, and he had about two hours left to live. So we felt very, very fortunate to have him be so close, and he had almost no rejection. So it was basically a perfect match. So that was very lucky for us. And by getting the heart, he was able to see his son married and see most of his 10 grandchildren born. So it's something very close to me. And all you need to do is put the pink dot, have the pink dot on your license, and that's all there is to it. And a lot of people think, "Well, if I have the pink dot on my license, they're not going to save me." Well, no, that's the opposite of what they do, because they want to keep the organ donors in good shape. When I was sitting at a table, Donate Life table, on Saturday, one of the girls came up to me and said that her cousin had been a donor, and he was able to do organ and tissue donation. And so she was very intuitive. So I was fortunate to be able to see her. And those are the kind of stories we like to hear, and I'll go through a drive-thru and have my top on, and somebody will say, "Oh, my brother was a donor." Well, that's great, you know? So we're finding more and more people out there. So thank you very much for honoring the Donate for Life people, and hope everybody here has their pink dot. And I'll be giving you a little pin, a couple more pins, okay? And a little card to pass around, too. If I don't drop them on the floor again.
So can we have another round of applause from Marjorie? Thank you.
And this will be up at our run-walk. We have all our proclamations posted at our run-walk. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, any individual in the audience can come forward and speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction, but...
You have a five-seat presentation by presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry, Russell. I almost was moving ahead to Oral Communication. Next up, we've got a presentation by Mr. Dix from Consolidated Disposal, providing their annual update.
It's our pleasure tonight. My name is Russell Dix. General Manager of Consolidated Disposal, Sam Hall, and I want to take just a couple of minutes tonight. We appreciate you allowing us to do that. We just wanted to give an update of what we've done this last year and the first year of the term of the new contract. As far as the service overviews go, you know, the trash recycling green waste collection is every Thursday, and we give an option for three different sizes of containers. Our monthly household hazardous collection is first in this new contract. We're getting some real good participation there. We do it every first Wednesday, so TVs, computers, home garden chemicals, paint, and that kind of thing. We send a, we do is we gather, we use a third-party firm that's bonded, licensed, and everything like that, because we aren't. So what we do is get it all on one day, and then he comes sweeps through the city and collects it all. So we've had some good success there. Started out a little rough, but we've been educating, getting more information out, and as that comes, more people are participating. So that's been great. Our annual holiday tree collection, we've been doing that for a long time, of course, for a couple of weeks. We try and get it right after Christmas and continue after New Year's, because a lot of people like to keep the tree up a little bit longer. So we stretch it out. And of course, anybody that has it after that, we still pick it up. We try and just catch it during that timeframe. Bulky items, couches, those that, large items that people are not able to put in their trash can, so they call us separately, we schedule, and they come right to their home and pick it up on the scheduled day. Additional recycling carts are free. Anybody that wants to do some additional recycling, it's all about diversion these days. So we try and promote, you know, rather than spend money on an extra trash container, getting a free recycle container, doing more recycling, and it helps the city's numbers. And of course, Consolidated now offers the street sweeping throughout the city, something new for the contract. We service 1,856 single-family homes, 99 multifamily buildings, commercial accounts and industrial accounts. So that's kind of the basis for what we do here in the city. The diversion levels, you can see 9, 10, and 11. The one we really want to look down is the bottom right-hand corner, the 59.4. That's the city's diversion rate as recognized by the state. You can see compared to the 1999 baseline. In 1990 is when they came up with AB3, 939, where the goal was 25%, and then it became 50% of what it is today. So you're 59.4% or beyond what the state's asked the city to do, and so we're all good there. That's why it's green. Green is go. Something interesting here, I think, is that, as you can see, that the wood and the green waste and the mixed, is the number-one item now in the city for creating diversion. Five to seven years ago, it was the newspaper, which is now 10, and the mixed paper, which is 22, so it was about 32%. That number used to be about 5, over 55%. But with the advent of the Internet, and everybody can not buy newspapers anymore, they can go online and pick up the information, you can see how that shift, shifted. But the good thing is, it's still diversion. It's still not hitting the trash cans, so it's still counted as diversion, so it still works for the numbers for the state. But it's just interesting how the, what's happened with the Internet, what kind, what that's, what's caused that. But that's kind of the makeup of what we call a waste characterization of the material that comes through the residential collection. So that's where we are with that. This last year, this last year, we had 97 total missed pickups. What we call missed pickups was down by 40, 40%, from last year. But the good part is that we're, in picking up the residential collection, we're 99.98% successful. So the whole year last year, we missed 97. If someone forgets and puts it out late, we don't even ask the customer, we just say, "Set it out. If it's by noon, we'll pick it up. If it's afternoon, we collect the next day." So again, no questions asked, but it's, the success ratio is really good here in the city. And I think that's been, that's probably similar to what we've done over the years. We use the, one of the largest material recovery facilities in the United States over in Anaheim. They just went through to retrofit this next year to do a lot of automation towards getting the materials out of the waste stream. And it's a 35-acre campus, as mentioned there. It serves more than 2.5 million commercial residential customers every week. It's permitted to process 6,000 tons per day that goes through that, that can go through that facility. The new retrofit increased from 20 tons to 50 tons per hour. You can imagine 50 tons per hour running down the line. They've really done a great job with the new technologies to try and recognize material. A lot of it is, is, they use light to try and recognize the makeup of the material, and it comes through, a little flip flips it over, they use air that blows it off the line. It's pretty incredible what they've done to try and really increase the amount of diversion without having to use so many people on the line trying to pick through it. We still do that. Sometimes it doesn't get everything, so we do need people, sorters, what we call them, to try and get those things that don't come off. That's the optical sorting, which I talked about. And then we completed complete automated storage and baling system we have, and then we have an eco center. And I might mention, if anybody in the city, in the city council wants to come visit, we have a complete eco center. You can go and tour the, tour the facility and actually see all of this in action. It's actually a pretty good tour to see what's going on, what the latest and greatest is. So if you have some time, we can set that up for you. Again, just, it looks like a bunch of trash, but there's a lot of recycling in there. Kind of you can see how it goes up the line, it's fed through that, and then it goes, it comes up through the belts, goes through a sort line. Again, most of these, now they're pulling out trash as opposed to recyclables. The old days, we would just line a bunch of people up, and they'd actually pull off the recyclables. But now we're just pulling off the trash, because it does such a good job of recognizing what it is. Again, just more pictures of the, of the sort line, how this, they have what they call for cardboard star screens, all the large things, it throws them off first, so it allows the smaller things to come through underneath. So just different ways to tumble and turn the trash as it's going through to collect the maximum amount of material. You can see off to the left, the bales of, the bales of paper. There's one here on the right. Again, just, just to try and show that we've gone through, this is kind of what the, what the facility does. That's the end product. On the right-hand side, that will go, most of it goes to overseas, where they use that in making more paper, and then the paper comes back to us. So we ship the, we ship the recycled material, and then we get back in the form of paper. They go through, and they heat it, and they pull all the ink off of it and create weight paper, and they give it back to us. So talk about the new legislation. You know, originally, there's AB32, you probably heard about, it was a global warming solution, which really was, was targeting composting facilities, landfills, cleaners, people that have been at a lot of odors and things into the air. So they included now the AB341, which is a recycling initiative as part of the AB32. And basically, the requirements are, and it takes, in fact, July 1 of this year, it's coming up. Commercial facilities, we have more than four cubic yards per week. The standard bin you see behind a, like a store or something, it's three cubic yards. So if they collect that more than once a week, or that becomes a larger bin to a four, then everybody's supposed to participate. And then for multifamily, five units or more, if you have a building of that, you're supposed to participate. So what the city's required to do is educate, conduct outreach, and monitor compliance. The good part is that we're Murph-ing all the material. We've already met all the requirements for AB341, and we're going to assist the city in doing all those things. So we're just telling you, the city doesn't have much to do, because we've already started doing it, we already have the outreach going on. We will contact all the customers and let them know that they're hitting the 341 requirements already based on what we're doing. So we're relieving the city of having to do all that. We've met the requirements, because we're processing everything. Whether you're a little business or a big business, same thing. We're already taking it all from years past, when we had to do, we did the commercial recycling. And then again, we're going to notify everybody that we're already there. In case somebody reads something in the newspaper, we're going to let them know ahead of time that, hey, we're already there. And then participation in the committee the last year, the quarterly recreation program, we participated in that and putting ads in there. Keeping it Green and Clean Los Alamos, that's an educational newsletter that we publish. On top of that, again, education, household hazardous waste, those kinds of things, we're just trying to get people to think about it. State of the City, the Fourth of July fireworks monetarily, and we support with some booths and put our trucks out there and that kind of thing, just, again, creating an awareness of the recycling that we're trying to do. Race on the base, wings, wheels and rotors. We bought, we purchased equipment for the LETV facility, and then, again, we donated to the high schools, so they're able to broadcast their games live. So we gave them some money, so that would help them out in what they had to do. And then coming soon, we're working with the city to try and develop a 30-minute recycling educational video. I think we're well on the way to trying to get that done. We have multifamily cleanup events. We're just trying to decide where's the best place to put those. Generally, it's, you know, we'll spot the big, the big construction boxes, and so allow people to come in, again, throw away those things, they're not going to fit in their trash can, they've had their backyard forever, just want to get rid of it for whatever, they're done seeing it in their house, but we'll make that available to them. And then solar-powered compactors for high-traffic areas. It's just a way to, we can, we can get more in and compress them, don't have to serve them quite as often. Of course, solar power, which will help in the compressing, so. That's kind of the, I know I ran through it kind of quickly, I didn't want to take a lot of your time, but just wanted to update you on the things we've been doing in the city, and certainly I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you, Russ. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep, appreciate it. Okay, now we're going to move into Oral Communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited, no more than five minutes per speaker. I've got two speaker cards. I'd like to start, if I could, with Maria Teresa Diaz. Hi, Maria.
Mayor Troy Edgar, members of the council, all the city officials. My name is Maria Teresa Diaz. I am the president of the Committee of Love for St. Isidore Historical Plaza. I am here tonight to thank the members of the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department of Los Alamos for granting me the Volunteer of the Year Award. I'm really appreciated. It was a great night. Thank you so much. I humbly accepted this award on behalf of the members of the Committee of Love for St. Isidore Historical Plaza. This award belongs to all of them for their tireless work and for their achievements for the last 12 years. We have many reasons to be proud. The immediate result of our labor is to see St. Isidore Historical Plaza still standing and to offer community services there every day of the week. We're so proud of that. Our mission is to purchase, protect, and preserve the plaza. We have accomplished two out of those three major goals to the present time. We have been protecting and preserving it. Our last goal is to purchase the property, the property for which they are asking $1,200,000. That is our big task ahead. We have exactly two years to meet that goal. The deadline is May 31, 2014. It has been calculated that if every neighbor in the vicinity would contribute a mere $10, our goal could easily be met. That is why I am calling everyone to come forward and say, "Here I am. Here is my contribution." The plaza now belongs to the Orange County Diocese, but once purchased, it will be gifted to the city of Los Alamos. That means it will belong to the whole community. What we are doing is not a business. It is an act of love. Our mission will be accomplished once the plaza is ours to give to the city. Our vision is to see our beloved St. Isidore remain in the middle of the city as a beacon of our past, as the cultural, spiritual, and social heart of the city for today and for future generations to enjoy. With your help, we can make this happen, and thank you again, Los Alamos. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
All right. Shelley Henderson?
My name is Shelley Henderson. Normally, I don't make news, I just write it. But I am here tonight with a happy announcement. We have, at Orange County Breeze, finally got all of our ducks in a row, and we are on track to put out an inaugural print edition of Orange County Breeze for June. It will be a monthly lifestyle publication, not a weekly newspaper. We look forward to delivering it to 30,000 locations within our coverage area. Our four communities are Los Alamos, Rossmore, Cypress, and the Joint Forces Training Base. I look forward immensely to expanding our coverage from 300 pixels, which is the maximum size of our photographs on the website, to nine inches wide on the front page of the print edition. So I want to encourage everyone, if you've got news, send it to editor@oc-breeze.com, and make sure you get the hyphen in there, because otherwise, it goes to an air conditioning company. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Shelley. Yeah. All right. Those are the end of the cards I have. Does anybody in the audience like to make public comment? All right. See you none. I'm going to go ahead and move forward to the register of major expenditures. I'd like a roll call vote.
Can you get a motion in a second, first?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Graham Mahia?
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Mayor Protempo?
Aye.
Mayor Edgar?
Aye. Next up is the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon with one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Would anybody like to pull any of these?
Can I pull A, E, and G for just very quick comments on each?
Sure.
I want to pull B.
Okay.
Motion to move the remainder, if no one else has any.
Okay. Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item 8A, approval of minutes. Jerry?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if it would be supported by the council. On page five of 10 in the meeting minutes, we have a list, you know, bullet points. The fourth bullet point down, it talks about opposition received from residents. I'd like that, if I can get the support, to say support and opposition, but if I remember the meeting correctly, it said we had more in favor than we did opposing. So maybe something to that. And with that, that's the only item I have.
So that's a motion. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Sorry.
Or abstain?
If you can. If you can put in the standard that we have. Thanks, Wendy.
All righty. Item 8B, warrants. Warren?
Thank you. On the first page, I want to set aside the payment to Barrick Tran and Mineslinger for now. Want to understand what that is and what materials we have on it. So other than that, I'll move to approve the rest and hold that on its side.
Second.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, which one was that?
Barrick Tran and Minesinger.
It's about fourth from the top.
I see.
Attorney's fees.
Well, can we just get?
I think he wants documentation that goes with it, so.
Yes.
Just to move the meeting along, I'm good with supporting that and just.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
If we don't approve it, then it doesn't get paid, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Is that a problem?
Angie?
I think it's like all of our invoices that, you know, if councilmember Kusamoto wants documentation, then we'll try to provide him what he's requested and contact the vendor and tell them what's happening.
Contact the vendor over, they submitted a legal bill to us, so you have that, correct?
Yes.
So I think what councilmember Kusamoto wants is the bill. So is that something you can just provide him?
I want to set aside not to pay at this point in time. It's very simple, and I'll move the remainder of everything else to get approved and prepayment.
I understood your request. I'm trying to get a clarification for Mayor Protempo.
I don't know whether there was anything attorney-client privilege within the bill. And that would be a question for Barrick Tran as to whether there's anything that can't be disclosed, but otherwise, shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Anybody else have any other comments? I'm fine. I mean, we've all pulled stuff off to get more details, so I don't have any issue with that.
Fine.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Okay. Okay, 8E, Jerry?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like a little bit of clarification. I called the city today and spoke with staff, and it didn't seem to me that the agenda item had enough information. And so when I verified with the city, I didn't think that the 11 speed humps would be significant because of the distance of each of the alleys, the length of each of the alleys. So Dave, if you could clarify for us what we're voting on here, that way the council's informed.
I'd be glad to. And this is sort of my fault when asked at the last meeting, how many alleys would it, are there between Lexington and Los Allo Boulevard? And I think I said it was three, and so we said, okay, three for each one, it'd be nine. Well, my brain apparently wasn't working because there was five, and it was a little bit longer distance than I thought. But luckily, I told Tony when he came up with the cost estimate, I said, I want a speed bump every roughly 250 feet that we talked about. So he came up with 22 of them, and that's what the cost estimate's for. And I, when I wrote the staff report, I kind of just followed what the minutes said, and I put that in there and did all that. So miscommunication on my part. There's really going to be 22 speed bumps, there's roughly 5,700 feet of alleys. It's all in the same price, but it's all going to fit the criteria we talked about. It's just I gave you kind of a misinformation at the last council meeting on the number.
Okay. Jerry, are you satisfied with that?
Yeah, that's great. I just wanted you all to know, because I called and checked on it today because I knew there was more than three streets. The only thing that I would like to ask is when you're going out to pick the spots where the speed humps are going to be, that we really be mindful that, yeah, we go together. Because I've been checking out the alleys and trying to come up with positions that are far enough apart that wouldn't be below somebody's window so they can't sleep, that type of thing. So other than that, I'm good to move this item.
Okay. So there's a motion. Can I get a second?
All seconded.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Item 8G, Resolution 2012-07 Establishing and Reducing Various Fees. Jerry?
Yeah, I just want to, a point of clarification on this. I only saw one fee. Am I missing anything?
No. Well, I had seen two fees, but, city manager?
There are actually two fees.
Okay.
One is for the copying cost.
Right.
And the other one is for duplication of the CDs from the meeting.
Okay.
And the attachment to the report, Exhibit A.
Okay.
List the fees and the types of things.
Right. I just, I wasn't sure, it didn't note anything in the written part. I just wanted to make sure I understood correctly. And just for clarification again, councilmembers don't have to pay the fee if they need an additional copy, correct?
I, that's correct, right, Wendy? Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and move the item.
Okay. I just had a comment on this. I had called the city manager. I, you know, definitely think it's important we kind of keep our fees in check, but this is a little bit of a piecemeal item. And, you know, if we're going to address fees at some point, I'd prefer we do them in a macro view. Some of the substantiations for two little bitty fees, we're changing 25-cent copies to a dime and CDs. And the rationale is because we don't want to allocate the costs of labor to it, we just want to use the cost of material. That type of rationale could be utilized all the way through our fee structure. And, you know, so we're kind of setting a precedent on two very small things without looking at the bigger picture. And, you know, to me, I would prefer, you know, I mean, I'll support this, but I'd prefer to wait until we can actually come back and evaluate all the fees where it would have been more holistically dealt with.
The only thing with that is, I was part of the last time we addressed the fees. It does take a long time.
Yeah.
So I'd support implementing this and then moving forward and looking at it as a whole.
Sure. City attorney?
Can I just qualify, just to give you a little comfort on this? These two fees actually are different from the rest of the fees you charge because they're governed by the Public Records Act, which sets stricter limits on what you can charge. So whereas with other fees, you're allowed to charge personnel time and staff time that goes into it, with these particular fees, you're not. So you have options with your other fees that involve broader policy choices that we would bring back to you altogether. These two are a little bit different, so you can feel comfortable you're not setting a precedent for anything else by establishing these.
Mayor, if I may, if we could have that included in the staff report next time, that would be good, just so that we know what's going on.
Yeah. Mayor Protempo?
Oh, no, I'm fine.
Oh, you're, okay. Can I get a motion then for this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up is the ordinances, Section 9. First item, ordinance consideration of amendment to the Los Alamos Municipal Code relating to special meetings of the city council. And if you remember, this was a Part 2 of us trying to take the meeting frequency down from twice a month to once a month. And this is part of a compromise to make sure that we have the capability of anybody up here and a second to be able to get a meeting called to make up for the one meeting that we're going to be potentially taken away with that city manager. If you'd like to add anything on a technical level, that'd be great.
There's really not much to add. We're just adding to the ordinance that, to allow the mayor and two members of the council to call a special meeting instead of three members of the council. So it's as simple as that.
Okay. Because it's an ordinance, what I'd like to do is, I'm going to, first of all, see if there's any comments up here, then I'll open it up, we'll see if there's any public comment, and then bring it back and then go from there. Does anybody have any comments? I fully support this, so I don't know if there's.
The only question that I have is, I appreciate the council supporting this because I think it gives everyone an opportunity to weigh in on whether or not there needs to be a meeting. The staff will still provide any supporting data for those council meetings as they do for any other meeting, correct? It's not like you're expecting the council members to generate their own agenda site. Okay, great. That's it.
All righty. We're going to go ahead and open it up. Anybody in the public want to comment on this item? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and bring it back, and I'm going to look for either further discussion or a motion to move this.
Make a motion to move.
All right. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? City attorney, can I ask you, do, we need to read this in a certain fashion, or is it good?
You need to read the title of the ordinance, or I can do it for you.
Could you do that? That'd be great.
Sure. It is ordinance number 12-03, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending Section 2.04.020 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code Relating to Special Meetings of the City Council.
Great. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Passed unanimously. Next item, 9B, First Reading of Ordinance 10-02, I'm sorry, 12-02, Amendment to the Los Alamos Municipal Code to Provide for One City Council Meeting Per Month. City manager?
Along the same lines, just a different section of the ordinance. This is just bringing back the items that include meeting start time at 6:00 PM and closed session starting at 5:00 PM and including that in the ordinance.
Great. Thank you. I'll bring it back. Anybody in the city council have a comment before I open this one up?
No.
Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment. Anybody in the audience want to comment on this item? And the item is 9B. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close that, bring it back to the council, and ask for either further comments or a motion to move this.
I'll move approval.
Okay. Got a motion. Can I get a second?
All seconded.
Okay. City attorney, we're going to go down that same path here, so if you can, just read down the recommendation number two, please.
Sure. The motion was to approve ordinance number 12-02, or rather, to introduce it. And the title is, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending Section 2.04.010 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code Relating to Regular Meetings of the City Council. And just in case there's any confusion, I want to note that the ordinance itself says the third Monday in each month. There is a typo in the staff report that says the third Thursday. It's the third Monday. So the ordinance is correct. You don't need to change your motion, but in case anybody in the public might have been confused, I wanted to clarify that.
I look for ordinance.
Great. Thank you. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're going to now move on to item 10, Discussion Items, General Plan Update Progress Report. City manager?
Stephen Mendoza has a nice update for us regarding the general plan.
Thank you, members of the council and the mayor. Mayor Protempo, thank you very much for having this opportunity to update you on our progress with the city's general plan. We're almost at our midway point, and we've completed a lot of outreach, and we thought we'd give you a progress report. So tonight, I'll be providing that progress report. I will share the presentation with three of the chairman from the commissions as well to provide you an update with some of their participation in the outreach. Tonight's presentation, we'll talk about what is a general plan, what a general plan addresses, some of our objectives in our outreach, some of the components, as well as the accomplishments that the commissioners will report out. We'll talk a little bit about some of the common threads we've seen thus far, and then we'll talk to you about our next steps. What is a general plan? This is basically for members of the audience. The city council has been well-informed of what the general plan is last year, but it guides the city councils, the commissions, and staff in making future decisions. Every city must have a comprehensive plan of where it's going to go in the future. In California, we call it a general plan. And it contains policies that are basis for land use decisions and capital improvements in the future. What a general plan is not, it's not zoning, it's not design guidelines, and it doesn't focus on short-term actions. Doesn't change a zone just for one purpose. What does the general plan address? Again, it is land use, circulation, housing, open space and recreational opportunities in the community, conservation, how to preserve your history, safety, police and fire, natural hazards, emergency readiness, and noise, how to keep certain businesses away from homes and make sure that uses are compatible when they're next to each other. Growth management, that's something that's required in Orange County general plans because they participate with OCTA and some of the funding. Economic development, that is not a required element in California, though we want to make sure our community's fiscally sustainable, so always include an economic element in our general plan. Why is it important? A general plan is planning versus reacting. Helps you get in front of an issue and be prepared for an issue before it comes to you. It's a long term versus short term. It's not immediately responding to a member of the community that wants a change. It's making sure we improve our community. It may take time, but it's worth it for the long-range planning of a community. In state law, it helps you defend any legal challenges you have to some of your decision-making because the basis of your decision-making is in a long-range document called the general plan. Some of our outreach has begun. Maria Teresa, you're in this photo. We started off with an event over at Satan Isador. We went to the people to make sure we received input from different audiences. A lot of our outreach has been because of a good website that our planning consultant, the Planning Center, Colin Drucker, has developed. If you're interested, just go to the Los Alamos General, I'm sorry, losalgeneralplan.org, and you'll see this website, along with updated fact sheets, updated newsletters, public surveys, both a short term and a short version and a long version we have in there, and some of the advertisements for some of our outreach is. And now we're having some of the conclusions of our outreaches. It's also airing on LATV, I think John's in the audience somewhere, Your Los Al TV. Some of our outreach objectives have been to inform and educate, attain public comment and ideas, generate excitement for opportunities. I think we have generated some of the buzz that we wanted to. Engage Rossmore residents. It's the first time that our sphere is included in our general plan. Raise the profile of the general plan to a higher level, and I think we're getting there. Elevate civic pride and build and enhance our partnerships for future change. You could see the logo down here that we've kind of adopted is bridging our community. And I think some of the things that we've done thus far is doing that. I'm going to go through a couple of slides of some of our outreach events with some of the participants and some of the materials they viewed during their participation. This was a nighttime event we had on March 8, I believe, or March 20. March 20. We were able to get all walks of life involved, all kids, kids with parents, parents brought their kids, they're certainly welcome too. We invited that, and we had participation events for the children to be involved in while their parents strolled the rooms. Some of the outreach components, I'm going to reiterate because we have a completed slide on this side and the ongoing and the status of those. We developed the project website, the public fact sheet, stakeholder interviews. We've completed 26 of those. We've completed three open houses during the month of March. We've also completed a public survey. That public survey is still open and ongoing. We're willing and going to keep that open a little while longer. Newsletters are constantly updated. We'll be coming out with our second one shortly. Commission meetings have been ongoing, and then we're excited to talk about a joint commission meeting that we recently had where we had 18 of the 21 commissioners involved. And the next step will be our focus group meeting. Some of our outreach results we're going to talk about tonight is, and they're just, just to paint a picture of where we are today. It's not a conclusion. All of the comments haven't been fully vetted, but we just wanted to give you a snapshot of what we're hearing thus far. It'll all be compiled in an outreach summary in a formal document later on. We'll be talking about some of the feedback from the open houses, the public surveys, and the joint commission meeting. During the interviews, these are some of the common themes that we saw. We call common threads is the image and identity of the community, creating a town center or a downtown for the community. Parks, recreation, and community facilities were talked about quite often, the types of facilities people are interested, nighttime versus daytime, lighted versus unlighted, unprogrammed fields versus programmed fields, traffic congestion, of course. This is Los Alamos, so we always hear about traffic congestion. But many people participated in trying to find solutions for traffic congestion. Retail opportunities, the quality of the built environment, that's the physical structure of our city. What's it look like? What do we think of that? And the Joint Forces Training Base, of course, is always mentioned, and the city boundaries is one of the common things we heard during the interviews. Summary of some of the things that we heard during the open house, again, traffic congestion and improvements for those traffic issues, land use and economic development, pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. You'll see bicycles mentioned quite often. Streets, again, bicycles, open space, recreation, community facilities, and the image and the aesthetics of the community. Summary of the surveys, some of the things that we're seeing in the survey so far are the preservation and improving the physical condition of the community. Create a stronger sense of place and a revenue base by improving downtown. Everyone wants to make sure we have fiscal sustainability in the future. Enhance and expand public services and amenities. People love to be proud of Los Alamos, and they want to assure that occurs in the future. Maximize existing potential land use opportunities for greater fiscal sustainability. What we're hearing is that people want to make sure that choices for specific plots of land are considered with the fiscal sustainability of our community in the future. Strengthen partnerships with local agencies and neighboring jurisdictions. I think what we've heard thus far from the surveys is people want to get along with their neighbors. And attract and retain jobs in a variety of industries, which we're lucky here in Los Alamos. We have a good mix of industrial, commercial, and some aerospace that are really good employers in our community, and of course, the medical industry. Now, we're really excited to talk about an April 4th joint commission meeting where the both the Planning Commission, the Traffic Commission, and the Parks and Rec Commission came together in an unprecedented event. They filled this entire room and were able to engage in a three-hour conversation regarding the Los Alamos General Plan and their role in it. It's rare to have finding commissioners be able to cross topics with each other, and they appreciated it. We'll hear more from those commissioners a little bit later tonight. The purpose of that meeting was update them on the progress that we've had thus far before reporting out to the city council. And it was a rare opportunity, again, to bring those commissioners together and to share subject matter. Traffic got to hear about recreation. Recreation was able to hear about planning, something that usually doesn't occur in some cities. And it was, again, it was another opportunity for public input after our March events. We wanted to make sure we gave another opportunity for some input. And then also to solidify a direction for the general plan before it moves forward to the city council. With that, I'm going to introduce our first of our commissioners. Tonight, I'm going to be introducing Norm Ray, the chairman of the Traffic Commission, and then he'll turn it over to Wendy Gross, the vice chairman of the Planning Commission, who will turn it over to Samuel Manning, the chairman of the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Commission. If I may, Norm?
Good evening. You can see a picture of us straining the credulity of Dave Hunt over there with our ideas at the joint meeting, which was a terrific meeting. I got to hear things that I normally don't hear and understand some things I don't see. You see there are our members, our vice chair, Pauline Bloom, is unfortunately not able to make it, but Dave Emerson, Johanna Schluter, Richard Vardeman, and James Willam. I'd like to thank them for showing up for this meeting and for all of the work that they do on the Traffic Commission, or as we call it, the Parking Problem Commission. What we came up with at the meeting was a little bit more than just parking issues, and it was fun to concentrate on some stuff besides traffic, but to put our little bit on it. And one of the things that we came up with that we all wanted to see was that in the future, we look to moving City Hall off of a very desirable piece of real estate that it really doesn't need to be on. Not that we don't love City Hall, but it doesn't need to be here. We've seen that a lot of post offices are being closed, and the post office over on Reagan Street might be one of them, and that would be a great place to move the City Hall and make this a possible retail location, especially if it could be combined with the super media site next door. It would give us an opportunity to develop something that bring in an awful lot of revenue and be right on the freeway, right by the off-ramp, right by the on-ramp that it needs to bring a lot of people in without really contributing to a whole lot of traffic in the rest of the city. This is not people that are going to be cruising down Cattella. These are not people that would be cutting through the Farquhar or cruising by the high school at the wrong time. It would be a way of getting people in the city, just bring in outside money without increasing our traffic problems. One of the other things we all liked was the Los Alamos Boulevard corridor plan. We have one shot at creating a walkable downtown, one, and that's it. And if we blow this, we'll never get another chance. You can't go back. Once you've built a street, you can't undo a street unless there's some kind of earth-ending thing where we get to bulldoze the whole city and start over. We're never going to have another chance to do it. And we like the plan. We like the idea of slowing the traffic on Los Al Boulevard between Cattella and Cerritos. We like the idea of having some kind of a destination spot where we could have a Christmas tree lighting, where we could have community meetings, a place to walk, a place to have a parade, and that's it. Even if this site here, the City Hall and the super media get developed, it's not really a walkable place. It's not really a destination. It's on the edge of town. It's next to the freeway. It's not the same thing as Los Alamos. We've heard a lot of talk about the crossover for kids, a possible crossover for kids crossing over Cerritos to the high school, and we didn't actually pick that one. We like better the idea of a crossover right here from Rossmore. A few reasons. One is obviously traffic safety for the kids that are going to and from school, going to Oak. Another is that it will speed up the traffic on Cattella because we will not have the traffic slowed down by crossing guards while the kids are getting back and forth because that is a very wide street. And if we could get the kids going over the top, we would speed up Cattella. And because it would be on Cattella, a super street, a street that's got that designation, it's going to be possible to go after other people to pay for it, not just the city of Los Alamos. If we were to put something across in front of the high school, we wouldn't be able to tap anybody else for the funds. But because it would be going across Cattella, we could look to different transit authorities in the county and look for some other sources of funds, and I think it would happen. We also like the idea of having that bridge have our name on it, a quality name, something that looks really nice, something that announces to people that they are now entering Los Alamos because right now, there is nothing that says that you're entering Los Alamos. I think there used to be a sign that said people were entering Los Alamos on Cerritos, on the other side of the river, and there's some bolts sticking out of the ground. I'm not sure if it was leaving Long Beach or entering Los Alamos, but there really isn't anything that tells anybody they're entering Los Alamos. I would like to tell people that. I'm proud of this town. I've been here for over 10 years. I like this place. I'd like to make it a destination, and so does everybody else on the Traffic Commission. I would really like, and the rest of the Traffic Commission says so too, would really like to go after that fourth corner. I would like to make those businesses part of our town. And I understand that the property owners, I think there's five of them, have been approached that they didn't like the idea of having to pay more fees than what they're paying right now with the county. But I think it's a forgone conclusion that eventually Rossmore will be on its own. The county will successfully push out Rossmore, and I think that those owners will be paying a lot more money to the people of Rossmore than they will be to Los Alamos. And we could approach them with that. We could go back again and say, you come onboard with us, or you become part of Rossmore, and they're going to need a lot more money than we need. And bearing that in mind, there would be significant traffic issues if the land was developed into doing something other than what it is right now. And there would have to be a lot of work done to make sure that it doesn't degrade our traffic on Cattella and on Los Al Boulevard, but I think that we could work with that. And so that's what we came up with. I would really like to see another joint commission meeting. I'm hoping we have another one, and because this was very productive and it gave us a chance to get off of what we normally do, something other than traffic, and look at the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Ray. That was a good presentation. Your commission did a good job there. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Gross, and I'm the vice chair of the Planning Commission. Chairman John Riley actually did want to be here tonight, but at the last minute, he was unable to attend, so I am going to fill in for him. At this meeting, I'd just like for you to understand, every one of our commissioners were there from our particular area. We had Larry Andrade, Will Daniels, Gary Lowe, Victor Solfatanic, and Ben Sutherland were all in attendance. And if you can just imagine this particular room with posters up about all the different designs that we could do for our city, the maps, I mean, this was an amazingly filled room with all types of ideas for all of us. And I'd just like to thank Steve Mendoza for putting that together and allowing us the opportunity to get together with all the commissions at once and share ideas and thoughts and hash out things, and hopefully we'll do it again. From the Planning Commission's perspective, we had a lot of different things that we thought of. There are more than just what you're going to look at right now. There is just so many things that you can't put down at one time and bring to you. So we tried to define it down just a little bit and give you an idea. We do want to have a vision for the city, and we want to get a clear definition of what the city should look like as a whole, instead of having a piecemeal, have more of a defined look to us. We want to maintain and enhance our relationship with the school district. We recognize that our school district here is a blue ribbon school district, and we're very proud of that. That maintains our property values, and that helps with the education of our kids and bringing people to our area. We want to continue that relationship. We wanted to find interests to our city. We want people to come in and not just drive through, but recognize this is Los Alamos, and we are a jewel of this Orange County area. We don't want to be just another city. So we're looking to do bridges. Now, you heard on the Traffic Commission one, we were actually looking at potentially two bridges, the high school and the one over here by Oak, as being two possible bridges with our name on it. And this is at least a way for people to see, this is Los Alamos you are now entering. We would like to have more defined walking paths, bike paths, downtown destination area, a place that people want to come and spend the evening, walk around, shop, look around during the day. We want people to have a good time, walk, ride a bike, and be able to stop. We don't have bike racks for people to stop, put their bike in, at least put a safety lock on it. We'd like to see more of that. We know that the city codes have been an issue in the past. Sometimes our businesses learn when the code enforcement, apparently, officer is not working, and they learn how to get around that. So we want to get better at enforcing these things. We want to work on getting a centralized parking area. I bet everybody here understands parking in Los Alamos can be very challenging. We want to look at trying to, how do we work that best for all areas and get more of a centralized location for people to park so that it's not half here, there, and everybody complaining? We would like to utilize prime property. We're sitting on it right now with City Hall, and that doesn't benefit the town. We'd like to find ways to move City Hall and some of the others so that prime locations become retail for us and bring in better tax dollars. There's multitude or different areas that we can use, and that you heard earlier, possibility would be where the post office is. We could potentially tie that in with the school district and other things there. So that is a win-win there. We had, one of our members would like a little bit more work on the overlay of Cattella. So that's a possibility. He says, you know, we need to look at, what are our whole future plans down the road for Cattella Boulevard? So that is something that we could consider. We also talked with many of the different commissions about the St. Isidore. We all recognize how lucky we are to have a little jewel like this in our town, and we could benefit with this. Some plans for St. Isidore would not just be the fact that the city could utilize it, but how could the city utilize it? They have a meeting room there that could be utilized for rental for the city down the road, and that could be a source of income. We could use it for a multitude of different organizations or weddings, potentially. We also talked about the possibility of moving the museum right by St. Isidore and making that a central point, and then bringing the downtown project right around from there. So there are ways to work. How could we bring the downtown project and a part of our history all into one? We'd like to see a better sports arena or area for the kids. We would like to have it more centralized and not just a little here or there, but we'd like to see something. And the possibility of putting something on the Joint Forces Training Base was considered with baseball diamonds, soccer fields, the gymnastics, or stuff like this where it's centralized and we could utilize that for all the organizations that use our different areas. We have, I know, the AYSO, we have Friday Night Lights, we had gymnastics, you have the pool over here. I know we have baseball diamonds over there. So all of these things could be utilized if we locate them all into one area and then build some kind of facility that would at least bring people in that direction, thereby maybe enhancing some of the other areas that they're using right now for the sports and use that for shopping, potentially. We want to find a way to bring businesses into our community, look for incentives. Why would they want to be here? The question shouldn't be that. It should, why wouldn't they want to be here? And that's part of what we want to develop, is why wouldn't anybody want to be in this town? And we're hoping that through all of our commission meetings, that we have that opportunity. When we all met as a team, I went to a couple of the nights just so I could hear what other people in the community were saying. I've seen different people at the different commissions on these nights that we were allowed to have Stephen Dosa reach out to the community to get their input. And we did see that there was a lot of the same things that all of these commissions feel, our people here in this community feel. They do want to revitalize St. Isidore. They want a nice downtown area. They want to focus on making this a nicer, friendlier, safer community to be in. They want to have better investment here. They want Los Al to be their investment. My home should be my investment and should not be going down in value but up, and this is what they look at. They look at that through what they can shop, how can they walk, and places like Prevasa that comes here that attracts people from other areas. We'd like them to stay here and shop, but we want people to come in and use our services well. We'd like to have a safer place for all of us to be. We'd like to have a nicer community feel. And, you know, overall, I just want to, from my side, and I know all the commissioners that were with my group, we're very pleased that you've allowed us this opportunity to meet as a whole group. We hope to do it again. I think we came out with a lot of information. We have a lot more to do at this point.
Thank you, Vice Chair Gross.
And I'm going to go over to Parks and Recreation, Samuel Manning.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, city council.
Good evening.
I am, of course, Chairman Samuel Manning for Parks and Recreation. At this meeting, we had all the following, except for Beth. She was not available, but she has put in her input beforehand. But we also have Pete Carvall, Candy DeWitt, Chuck Landon, Kathy Matsubuda, and Elliot Singer, and they've all been very helpful in this process. When we were going through things for Parks and Recreation, we were trying to look outside of just Parks and Recreation. Of course, this is a look at the entire city, not just our certain focus. So we were trying to diversify, what things would we like to see? And of course, I think the number one thing was to maintain our good relationship and cooperation with the school district. I would say that the school district that is here is probably the backbone of this city. So many families come here just so their kids can be in these schools. They have some of the best schools you'll ever find, and of course, I've been there not too long myself, and I can say I'm a witness to that. It is some of the greatest education you'll have around here. And of course, tying into that for families is they like to have a city that's safe. So let's keep a current level of security and services, you know, our police force, fire, everything. Let's make sure that it is safe for our community as well, so that families can live nicely in our great city. Also, we looked at aesthetics for the city. Let's give our city a certain look. Let's have something to go to. Let's have a central area. The next four here kind of go together. Downtown area, let's have something that says, we're Los Al. We're not just a crossroads area that you sort of missed on your way to Cypress, but we're Los Al. We are a city. Also with that, we'd like to take advantage of some of our open spaces that we have. There are some vacant areas, and how do we use them? Of course, do we build more businesses, get more tax revenue, or would we rather have a park where the families can take their kids and have a little bit of recreation? We should try to strike a balance between the two, a nice, happy balance. Another big one was alternative transportation. This would include walking on your sidewalks to bike paths and maybe working with the county for some sort of public transportation. The idea with this is connectivity. How do I get from one side of the city to the other on my bike without being hit by a FL car? You know, if you can make it to Long Beach, you'll get really nice bike paths, but getting to Long Beach from anywhere in Los Al is dangerous. So bike paths would be really nice, and of course, all forms of transportation that would get you out of your car, which will cost you $4 a gallon or more. Also, we would like to see better code enforcement, especially the example that we were coming up with all the time was with the local light industrial areas and the noise. up with all the time was with the local light industrial areas and the noise that comes from them, and, you know, people are being woken up in the middle of the night. And when we were doing our outreaches, we were getting some interesting quotes, which, you know, this is the kind of things that we were thinking too. You know, we have parks and rec facilities, but they're not where we live. You know, we have to walk so far just to go to a little park. You know, let's have something closer to home, let's have more fields. St. Isidore, this has come up several times, it's not a surprise. We like St. Isidore, we'd like to keep it, let's do something with it. And for our fields that we do have, let's see some more lighted facilities for those fields. Let's be able to use them night and day. And with that, I'll turn it over back to Stephen.
Great job.
Thank you, Chairman and Vice Chairman. I really appreciate your help this evening, and again, I thank you, Council, for allowing that joint commission meeting. I think everyone benefited from the outreach that came of it. Some of the other notable quotes we're going to talk about is the, the need to retain the city as a small town, but we don't want small ideas. That's something we heard numerous amount of times. Los Alameda's is still a community where you know your neighbors, public servants, you know where your public servants are, everyone's approachable and reachable. They like the sense of intimacy. We have many parks and facilities, they may not be in walking distance though, they may not be in the right locations. Need more than a great school district for families, we need to give them a place to go outside of the school. And again, another comment about St. Isidore, possibly as a library in this case, people talking about a 21st century library or a cibrary is one of the things that we've heard, and the fact that our current library is outside our jurisdiction. So people are trying to solve problems, not just give ideas, but they're trying to find solutions to issues that have been brought up through the outreach. We plan to have a follow-up joint meeting of the commission to fully scrutinize some of the comments that we've heard and to formalize them in a formal report to the City Council at a later date. We're going to be, the City Manager and I are going to be working on establishing that date, hopefully in the first week of May or second week of May. While we had the 18 commission members, we seized the moment to have 18 commission members in a room at one time and talk about the future prudent use of general fund reserves that the council's been engaged in conversation lately. And talking about giving back to the citizens and having them include them in identifica- in identifica- I'm sorry, identifying items to be included in a future survey of, of community members. And we're going to further discuss that at the next joint meeting of the commissions. And again, the opportunity to have eight engaged citizens are a perfect focus, focus group for that project. Some of the common threads that we've seen, these aren't the conclusions from the outreach, I don't want to mistake it. It's a snapshot. Today's just a snapshot of what we heard, and these are some of the common threads that we've seen in that snapshot, is land use, downtown, economic development, we keep hearing those themes, open space, facilities, image, vision, aesthetics. People are, you know, we're 60, 50-year-old community, but many of our housing stock is 67, 70 years old. Circulation, bikes, and connectivity, a constant theme that we're seeing because of people are seeing those kind of things come up in other communities, either where they work or where they, where they gather. The relationship with the school district, very important to them. Traffic, moving City Hall, annexation and boundaries is a topic people bring up quite often. Joint forces training base, streets and parking, these are all issues that we're seeing common threads on in our outreach thus far. Again, and we're going to hone down some of those comments and provide them in a document for the council at a later date before the council decides on policy. The Planning Commission and all the outreach will help influence City Council's future policy. Now, to summarize tonight, that we've had over 100 citizens participated, we've commented and documented those comments. The comments have represented a broad range of ideas, concerns, and interests, and participants easily described what they loved about Los Alameda's. It was hard to get them to stop talking. They loved the great education, the beautiful neighborhoods, the generosity of the residents and the businesses in the community, it's brought up quite often, they're very proud of that. Despite being in a very developed region, Los Alameda's is a small town with connectivity among its residents. Everyone's proud of that, they're able to be able to have representatives that are approachable to them. While other communities continue to grapple with large foreclosure, foreclosure rates or vacancy rates, higher crime or the loss of redevelopment, Los Alameda's isn't worrying about those things. Los Alameda's is in the inevitable position of being on a strong foundation right now. We have great schools, safe community, and engaged population, and all suggest a positive move upward. Los Alameda's is in a really good spot for that. Our next steps with our general plan are is to finalizing the existing conditions. That's all the stats and all the criteria that you'll see about how many parks we have, how many acres per resident we have, how many commercial properties have we have, it's all the stats that go into creating a general plan. We're going to have a second joint meeting, we're going to have the Technical Advisory Committee, which the school district is part of, the Police Chief is part of, all the department directors are part of that. The focus group meeting, we're still honing in on who should be part of that, we're finding gaps in maybe some of our outreach, some people that we haven't reached out to or been able to capture, so we're going to hone that in. Then we will see a draft land use plan eventually come to the City Council and the Planning Commission, and then eventually you'll see an EIR scoping meeting before we kick off the EIR. With that, I want to take the opportunity again to thank the City Manager, to thank the City Council and the commissioners for their work thus far with the general plan, and that is our report thus far.
Great, that was a good report, thank you. Yeah, let me go ahead and bring that back to the council and see if council members have comments. Councilmember Kuzamoto.
No comments, but thank you, Commissioners and Mr. Mendoza for this report, it's very thorough, I appreciate it.
Right. Councilmember Stevens?
You know, I do, I've got a few comments, and again, it goes along with what Councilmember Kuzamoto just said, thank you. It's one of the best presentations I think I've ever seen, and just the idea that we do have everybody working together on something like this, I think it's important to us, because now we can see our city moving forward. We can see a, a group of commissioners that are desperately looking for a good direction for us to go for the next 10, 15, 20, 25 years. We all love the city, and I like your little comment that you have up there, your title on it, bridging our community. I don't know who came up with that, was it a group of everybody, or was it one person?
It was the Technical Advisory Committee.
Okay. Tell them compliments for me, because bridging our community means more than just bridging our community. It's, there's a lot to be said in that comment, and it does go back to what was brought up as far as defining our city. We all know in our hearts what our city means to us, but no one from the outside does. And we heard the comment, people driving through the city as opposed to being in the city. Well, we're in the city, we know what it means, and we see the people drive through. So I agree with defining our city with the signs, that's something we need, because we want the signs to represent what we really stand for. Better, better utilization of city properties, yeah, and so I'm, I'm interested to see what you come out with on that one, just, just beautiful things coming out of it. You mentioned the school district. Well, the school district not only services residents of Los Alameda's, but it also services the residents of Rosmore, as well as Seal Beach. And when you were talking about putting the bridges over Cotella, that impressed me. That, that says a great deal, because it is dangerous the way it is right now, and I know that there are going to be more and more students as time goes on, and it's a good way of branding our community too. One common thing that came through was bike paths, and I've heard that for many years, in fact, being a bike rider myself. And I know that it is, is something that we need as an alternative source of traveling through our community. So again, I, you know, I just can't say enough whenever it comes down to thanking you. I'm, I'm excited to see the next steps and the timelines that you're going to establish for those next steps, putting the pressure back on future city councils to come up with how it's going to be done. We already know what the why and the what is, but we've got to be able to come up with a way to do it too. So again, Chairman Norman Ray, thank you. I'd like to thank Vice Chair Wendy Gross, thank you, beautiful presentation, and Chair Samuel Manning, thank you for all of you getting together, doing something that, to me, is fantastic, especially when I see a report like this and see the footprint of what you envision the city to be. I'm not going anywhere, and I don't think anyone around here is going anywhere either, so I'm looking forward to seeing the future for Los Alameda's.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Mejia?
I'll go ahead and defer, but I will say to the Commissioners, I appreciate you putting in the time. These are all things that councils, this council and prior councils have talked about, and as Councilmember Stevens said, it's the getting it done, it's the finding the funding, it's having the properties come available, but I don't think it isn't something we shouldn't plan for. And so, thank you again, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protempo?
Thank you. I also want to say thank you to the chairperson set, we're here this evening, very good, this is a great report. As we've all been involved with this general plan update, it's good to see the outcomes, because many of us have been on the input side of it. I, I think it's very interesting that, some of the observations. I was wondering, I didn't see specifically an outreach to the senior community. Possibly, we need to go to the Royal Oak Park and the facility over on Cotella, behind the Congregational Church, maybe just for short meetings or so on, because seniors in this community, well, in all communities now are very active. And if you go to the senior club on Thursday here, that's a happen thing. So it would be nice to see that faction included. I'm not saying it hasn't been, maybe it has, but it wasn't specifically brought up. It sounds like the commissions had a really good time and had a really, were really engaged, and I can see that there was some real, real good product from that. So this may be something we want to look at, having even after the general plan, maybe having one or two joint commission meetings where the council is also included, but more on an informal basis so that everyone can see what's going on in, in the other commissions. I think that's a, a really a good idea. Bike paths, we've heard about bike paths, and it is interesting. You come into Los Alameda's from, from Seal Beach and the bike paths end at Los Alameda's. And many people in the community say, why don't we have some? And I believe, if I'm correct, that the phase two of the Los Alameda's Boulevard Corridor planning did include some bike pa- bike paths, is that right, Stevens?
There were some suggestions for the, the different types of bike paths and where they can fit, yes. It had no implementation, but there were many suggestions.
Right. So it is something that has been talked about, and I would really like to see us out of this, and something that I think we could be doing right away, is to get back on the, our, our next agenda, the can, the moving forward of the Los Alameda's Boulevard Corridor. I think that that is very important, and I think we left that with a survey that was going to be for the outreach to the community, is that right, Stevens?
Yeah, the last stop on that was the, the engagement of the outreach program, yes.
Right, so possibly, I, I think it would be a good idea if we would bring that back and discuss that a little more, because it looks like there's been, from all of the commissions, that there was interest in that. So just thank you so much for a very good report, and I'm really looking forward to more reports. I, I did want to ask though, I thought we had, and I know they aren't big, but I thought as you entered Los Alameda's on Cotella, both ends, and in Seal Beach, I don't know, I don't think there's one off of Cerritos, that area, but we do have some monuments that say, entering Los Alameda's. Am I-
Welcome to, I think.
Welcome to, right.
Yes, we do, and all those three locations that you mentioned, we do.
Okay, they're not huge, so maybe they are overlooked, and as we, many times, what happens in your own community, you see something all the time and you just don't really see it, unless you're walking, I found that. When you walk the community, you really see a lot of things that you don't really pay attention to. So, very good report, and thank you very much to all of you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I, I guess in closing on this, I, I want to acknowledge, you know, this is one of the biggest projects that the City Council has taken on, so, you know, we, we kicked this off about a year ago, and it's $500,000 study that would normally be almost $1 to $2 million, and how we kept the cost down is we, we put a significant burden on the City Manager and on the Director of the Community Development, Steve Mendoza, and we said, use the community, and let's do as much as we can internally. And so, first and foremost, before I get to the Commissioners, I, I just want to say, I think the city staff, Angie and Steven, you guys are doing an outstanding job in the, in the Planning Center and the groups that are working with you, and I'd like you to pass that on to them too. You know, this is a byproduct of a very well facilitated process, and, you know, I, I will, I, I'm going to go with Marilyn, and, you know, we all have rights now to put stuff on the agenda, but, you know, something that I've been very careful to do as this general plan is coming to a head, is we've all got pet projects up here. You know, and so you kind of sit back and you don't want to over-influence the general plan, because this is the next 20 or 30 years, so you try to watch what's going on, you try to not, you know, you, you know, you really just want to give the commissions, you want to give the community, it's, this is their process. We've provided a forum, we funded a process to be able to get community input, but, but in real time, we're up here trying to make decisions and wanting to keep projects moving when, when we're talking about them for 20 years out up here. So it's a real fine balance of trying to, you know, not over-influence a process in, in progress, and also to get the most out of it. And then, like I said, some of us have specific projects that we're very focused on, and we go, God, I'd sure love to see that. A couple of the areas that I think just generally, that I think the themes that I got out of it, just to give feedback to the commissions and their involvement, and again, I would say, as Marilyn had talked about, I, one of the best shows of the commissions working together to solve a community problem or fix and look into the future. So again, I'll just say, not only to the Chairs and Vice Chairs that were here this evening, but to the commissions, I think this is what we've all been really trying to work towards, is, is to have everybody working together, and I think this was a great example. I like the idea of the themes of the meeting place, the branding, just generically the branding. I think we all want to see, you know, Los Al pushes itself out there to be in the community because of the school district, and then when you get into kind of superficial things like sports, people think, God, why do we produce so many good athletes at the school? Then you hear about the base, and they're like, God, these guys got a base. A lot of people still think we have the horse track, they think, God, this never ends, but we don't have the horse track. But, you know, so we, and then we've got a world-class hospital, and, you know, and one that's trying to grow and trying to, and, and in the middle of all this stuff going on right now, today, as we're sitting here, the hospital's getting ready to ramp up for major construction. So it's an exciting time here. And so I, again, the bike path item, that I, you know, I ride bikes too, and I'm usually riding on the river trails or the beaches and all that, and I don't even bother with Seal Beach to come up that way. You know, Marilyn talked about there was some previous projects that were slated in our CIP or Capital Improvement Projects back up through about four or five years ago, and there was a project in there for bike paths, but it was, it was stuff that really was hard to implement. You know, bike path behind suburbia to kind of get people off the road and take things over, and so we kept holding money in the Capital Improvement Projects when Jerry and some of the folks out there, they're fighting for streets to get repaired and carrier road, you know, we had to make some decisions to try and figure out what we want to do, and so it was hard to figure out, how do you implement some of these projects that take up much more than just putting a bike path in place? So I, real constructive ideas on bike paths would be helpful. Tying into, you know, to Coyote Creek, you know, one last thing I would say too to the commissions and to the groups, you know, if you think about 100 people now have been involved with this outside of what we're talking about here with the commissions, and a lot of input, but we have Coyote Creek Park getting ready to be completed. That'll tie in behind the Super Media Building, which ties into this place. So you have a really kind of an intermodal type of opportunity to have real ability to come up from the beach, come up through the bike path, get off at Coyote Creek, kick back there, have some sort of development happen here. I mean, I think the commissions and everybody that's involved with this has the right ideas, there's a lot- there's a lot of exciting opportunities, and like everybody's saying, we don't have the money to do it, but it starts with putting it on paper to give the authority for people when they do have the money to get it done. Those were my comments, I think that this is a great process, and that's all I have for that. This was a discussion item, so I think it's just a receive and file, so we don't really have any other actions. Anybody have any other comments up here on the council?
Nope.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and move on to Item 11, Mayor and Council Initiated Business for Council Announcements. Marilyn, would you like to go first?
Sure. As some of you know, I am the delegate to, we call it WestCom, it's the West Cities Police Communications. And we received, we had Dispatch Week, I think we had that on our agenda, we gave that out two weeks ago. But, there have been a lot of things, the people that work at the Dispatch Center, many of you, anyone that's really interested, they'll take you on a tour, and it is something to see, it really, really is. That's where all of the phone calls for emergency service come into. And you can imagine, the person on the end of that phone that receives that call, they're very, very special people. And I just wanted to read this, that the West Cities Police Communications have proudly recognized the following achievements. 2011 Dispatcher of the Year is Veronica Wilson, Meritoria Service Award, and this was for the Salon Meritage Shooting, Dispatcher Edith Davenport, Dispatcher Kelly Morton, Dispatcher Cheryl Austin, and Dispatcher Joy Nasser. Meritoria Service Award for the Motel Shooting, Lead Dispatcher Melissa Wintersall, Dispatcher Veronica Wilson, and Dispatcher Joy Nasser. There was also another award given to Lead Dispatcher for Meritoria Service, Kathy Moan. Exceptional Shift Teamwork Service Award. And as you can imagine, the people that work in this Dispatch Center do have to work as a team. Lead Dispatcher Kathy Moan, Dispatcher Josh Goldmark, Dispatcher Kristlyn Coleman, Dispatcher Joy Nasser, and Dispatcher Cheryl Austin. And then, they have kind of a Jokester Award that they gave to Dispatcher Tiffany Jacoboski, I'm sorry, I really butchered that. But, you know, it is such an intense environment all the time, that there does have to be a little bit of levity at sometimes, just so that people don't go really crazy. We're very proud of the people that work at WestCom, and proud to be part of that three-city organization. So, I just wanted, I think that people that do this kind of work really need to be recognized, so I just wanted to say their names for everyone.
Thank you.
I was very pleased to attend the CPRS District 10 Awards and Installation Banquet. You already heard this evening from Maria Teresa. The Park and Recreation Commission, every year, has the opportunity to nominate people for this, for special recognition. And we had not only Maria Teresa, who has done a wonderful job at St. Isidore, but we also had Nancy Carmelich. Many of you know, she was the founder of Banners of Honor, and facilitated that program, where we have all of the banners that are going down Lexington and down Cotella. So, this was a very nice event. I want to thank the Park and Recreation Commission for nominating these two people, because they were very, very deserving. It was a lot of fun, we had a lot of fun there, and we just have so many people in our community, I think, yeah, we were the only city that had two. So, that was really nice. We have so many people in our community that do so much in the community, so it was very good for the Park and Rec to recognize these two people. So, I was thrilled to be able to be there. I would ask staff to contact the Fire Authority. We're coming, we're in springtime now, we're coming up to summer, and our swimming classes are just filling up great, that's wonderful. But, there is a video that the Fire Authority has, and we have not had it here recently, and I think that it's well worth it. And it's called, it's about drowning, and it's called "The Silent Death." And it's very, very difficult to watch, but it's very important, because if you look at an overview of our community, you see all these little blue dots, and those are swimming pools. And through the years that I was on the Fire Authority, we learned about this, that it is a three-year-old boy that is most often found in a pool. And it's called "The Silent Death," because they slip in, and that's it, you don't hear anything. It's a very powerful program, the video is, but I think it's important for everyone in the community, as we come into summer, where people are going to be in their backyards, and having, you know, children around a pool, they have these lariats that you can put around your neck with a tag on it that says something to the effect, "I'm the pool watcher," so that when there's children in the pool, an adult should be designated and wear that. And then, if they're going to leave the pool, if children are in, then they give it to someone else. It's just very, I think it's important that we have that video as a presentation, it's not real long, but just as a reminder to people in the community, that we really need to make sure that our backyards that have pools are water safe for children. And so, if we could do that, I'd really appreciate it. And lastly, I would say, we would like everyone to remember that Cinco de Mayo, which is not really a Spanish holiday, it's really a United States holiday, it is on a Saturday this year, and we will be having a Cinco de Mayo Fiesta at St. Isidore on May 5th. And that starts, I think, right around 11 o'clock. Always a lot of fun, so we'd like everyone to come and enjoy all the festivities there. So, that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Marilyn, that festivities, does that include dancing, a lot of bands, a lot of good food?
Oh, yes, it does, of course, of course.
Just want to check. I think we all know that one. All right, in the last week, I had an Orange County Fire Authority Budget and Finance Meeting, and there isn't really much you can report out on that, except during this meeting, we were going over quite a few of the different investments that the Orange County Fire Authority has. One of the concerns, and it was a note of caution bought by some of the brokers as to the volatility still going on in Europe, and so, we're sort of, all of us cautiously optimistic in what's going on in Europe and the effect that it will have in this country. The fear is that if they sneeze on the Euro, we'll possibly catch a cold, and so, we have to build that into our plan, and I also know that our Finance Director was communicating directly with the Orange County Fire Authority, and I believe the Orange County Fire Authority even picked up some good ideas from you, too, in the comments that were made. So, congratulations for that. I wanted to thank Chief Hanson for the awareness and his presentation tonight, and he is right, doesn't take much to create a fire, and the fire in 1982 proved it, the fire in Yorba Linda, most recently, the station fire proved it. And every time that we do have the potential for a, something as small as a house fire, something as small as a barbecue that causes a problem, gets out of control, we had a fire in our city in an apartment complex on Green Street three weeks ago, four weeks ago, and when I went over and looked at it, my gosh, the thing that scared me was, we had those huge pine trees all around there, and then the apartments are right next to each other. It could have been a disaster. I mean, if the winds would have been up during that period of time, and we weren't able to respond as quickly as we did, it's a concern. So, along as, along with that, I think it's all of our responsibilities possibly, too, just to make sure the trees and shrubbery are pruned back. You don't have to be out in the wilderness to do that. If you have some large trees around your home, step back, take a look at it, and say, what if, what if that palm tree caught on fire? Where would those sparks go? What if that pine tree caught on fire? What would happen? So, take responsibility, I guess, for your properties just a little bit more, look at the potential impact that it's going to have, and possibly prune some of the trees back. But again, it is Wildfire Prevention Month, and that's a time for all of us to reflect within our own neighborhoods, within our own community, and make sure that it just doesn't happen here, that we're able to stop it. And Marilyn is correct, as far as that safety film goes. I have seen that film, it's important, and you don't have to have a swimming pool to have a child have a problem, bathtub, I mean, we even have the river over here, and just recently, I saw a bunch of children over playing in the riverbed with the water in the riverbed. I can't say it's wrong to do, but I'm also saying that it's dangerous, too. So, make sure the children are aware, and make sure that you always have that designated person that's going to take responsibility, and I guess be the lifeguard at any time. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Cusmano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I really have nothing to report, so back to you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Mejia?
Just a couple of things, the School District Working Group meeting tomorrow was changed due to the passing of a longtime teacher at the high school, so that will be rescheduled. I do want to encourage people, if you have a mind to, my nephew also died of cancer and was able to donate some of his parts, so, the lady that got up, Marjorie Boyd, she's working with Donate for Life California. If you want some information, the website is www.donatelifeCalifornia.org/passiton. I just think it's something that, if you felt led to do, absolutely helps save lives, and that's the best present you could give. Also, Todd, when is our next CERT class?
I believe it's in June, but I don't have a date off the top of my head.
If we could, I'd like to ask that when we move forward with the money that was set aside from the reserve, entertain the idea of maybe using some of that money for disaster preparedness, awareness for the entire community. I think it's something we're told often, that, you know, it's not if the big one's going to come, it's when it's going to come, and I just don't want to see Los Alameda's caught short. The councils in the past and present have looked very wisely on the retention of some monies, that in the chance that something like that does happen, the community will be well taken care of, and I would just like to expound on that, so if we can consider that for the future, and that's all I have.
Okay, great. Two things, kind of very positive at the beginning here, is again, as Marilyn said, I just want to encourage everybody to get over to St. Isidore Plaza for the Cinco de Mayo, it's going to be a blast, I think there's even more than dancing over there, that, I'll just call it Mexican festivities, there's going to be a lot of fun stuff going on, and everybody looks forward to it. The other part I wanted to talk about was, tonight is not too late, Pizza Mondays at Valentino's. The Casa U Shelter has got a significant fundraiser, it's Kenny Brandyberry, and he's in there right now, waiting to cook a pizza for you. And all the proceeds from that pizza go to the Casa U Shelter, and it's, last year, I think we made about $11,000 or $12,000 off of that. Kenny cooks every pizza, and he sometimes even delivers, so I would encourage everybody to support Valentino's Pizza, and if you could, get out there, and it's not too late tonight. Couple other things, just business of the city, went to the State of the City address for Westminster last week, and for all of us that know Marjorie Rice, this is her last year as the Mayor of Westminster, and she's, she served many years on the board, School Board down there, many years as a City Council Member, and now, coming at the end of her, let's see, it'd be 12 years on, as Mayor. And so, it's kind of the passing of the torch, you know, they have a City Council Member that's been on their City Council, Frank Rice, since 1966. So, if, you know, you definitely, and you know, what's very interesting is that the theme of their State of the City, just to share, was that, you know, they were significantly hit when they state turned over redevelopment. They had basically put their entire city under what they called a redevelopment window, and that meant that they were able to take money and put aside to fund redevelopment, and they got the Rose Center, very beautiful place, Vietnam Memorial, they've done a significant amount of really good things in Westminster, but what ended up happening, when that got pulled, they had a lot of outstanding loans for all that, that was getting paid for through redevelopment, that now is going back to the state. They had staff, you can imagine, we have a Community Development Director in Steven, and you can imagine, if he was going to administer projects for the commercial zone, he could do that through our normal budget. But if he was going to administer projects on the redevelopment side, they would have money set aside in redevelopment, so he could take on three or four more people to help facilitate those types of projects. Well, when your city is 100% under redevelopment, there's a fine line, or I shouldn't say a fine line, there's a gray line, a very shady gray area of what is redevelopment staff versus city staff. So, they're going through a very tough process right now, of trying to figure out how to fund their city going forward. And it was just, it's interesting, as a City Council Member, you know, and you come back and you see what we're going through, and it makes you really appreciate fiscally where we've been able to be very careful, and, you know, redevelopment was such a vogue thing to be a part of in the 80s, 90s, and 2000, and some cities became very overly dependent on it, and it's a big problem for them. I had a couple of meetings with the Orange County Sandation District, we're getting ready to do our fiscal year budgets. I also wanted to report, Seal Beach City Council, within the last two weeks, had put on their items, one of the items that we had taken on as City Council, as a good neighbor to Seal Beach, we weren't pushing an agenda, we just wanted to make them aware that a lot of folks in our community were contacting us about the shops in Rossmore, specifically the low-income and affordable housing element that they were potentially putting in their land use and zoning. And, you know, the Seal Beach City Council basically has removed the shops at Rossmore as a place for affordable housing, and so, just that kind of puts a closure to a chapter that we had kind of started within our city. And again, just to be very careful by the wording, we, as a good neighbor, just wanted to give input that our community was hearing about it, we knew at the end that they would find the right solution. We also wanted to make sure that we were constructive in our feedback and provided information to help them out, and so, we're very appreciative of their actions. I also want to encourage everybody, I believe, Ken, it's this Saturday, Cypress Station 17, the new fire station down there, it looks like it's been there for a while, but the actual dedication is Saturday at 10:30. And I would encourage anybody in the community, if you want to see a state-of-the-art fire station, that, it took a tremendous amount of effort, you know, the same time they were building that, they built the Seal Beach, the new Seal Beach Fire Station, and so, you've got a really neat facility. If you have kids, you take them down there, they'll take you for a tour of the facility afterwards, and your kids can get badges and plastic hats, and some of the council members from all the cities, because Station 17 has the only paramedic unit within the fire stations for this section, and so, we get a lot of support here in Los Alameda's from Station 17, even though it's in Cypress, you know, we share, so they're very important to our Station 2 here in Los Al, and then the station down at Seal Beach Boulevard down the other side of the 405 Freeway. I wanted to also congratulate We Care, the We Care group that's over off Cerritos, had a fundraiser a couple of weeks ago, and I just want to congratulate their President, Colleen Lowe, and Marty Thompson, they raised $80,000 in that We Care event for their charity, and, you know, and it's just another sign, everybody up here is involved with charities, a lot of people in the community, but, you know, it is so hard to raise money right now, and it just shows that in this economy, this community still looks out for charities and still takes on that responsibility within itself, and doesn't look for, you know, the public or the government to be able to provide the money, they actually raised the money, and it was a great, great showing there. And I remember six years ago, five years ago, when Marilyn was part of that organization, they had their first kickoff fundraiser at the Crumbies- at the Crumbie's House in Rosmore. And to see what it is now is just unbelievable. So again, congratulations to We Care and their continued work. Chief, just real quick, over the last two weeks, we have also had heroic action by one of our police officers pulling somebody out of a flood control channel. Could you just give an update to the community on that?
Sure. It was, it was just this last Friday when we had the real heavy rains. And Cypress actually got the report of a person who was swept away in the wash. Just the, the initial call came out in the Cypress city limits, right at the edge of Stanton. And as you know, about a year ago, we started sharing a radio frequency with Cypress. So our officers heard the call. They didn't call us for assistance yet, but because we heard the call go out, our officer, it was Corporal Chris Anderson, took it upon himself to, to go to an area that the Cypress officers weren't, that were not responding to. And, and he went to an area that happened to be where this person was first seen by emergency personnel. It was right off of Valley View. He climbed a fence, ran into the wash, and, and found this person clinging onto a rock. And as it turns out, he had probably traveled about two miles before Corporal Anderson was able to get a hold of him, along with the help of some citizens who saw him stop, and they also climbed the fence and went in there and helped. And they were able to pull this person out. He was taken to the hospital but released later that night in good condition. But it, but as it turns out, he was in, he was most definitely in a lot of danger when he was rescued.
Great. Chief, you know, we usually wait till the police officer appreciation lunch, but if there's any way possible, I think our council would be very appreciative to bring Corporal Anderson up and, and recognize him for, for doing that, if that would be okay with you.
Most definitely.
Yeah. You know, and then kind of, we focus on the small things sometimes, too, in the council. I don't know if you noticed, the news footage actually showed it from inside his car. I just want to do a plug, since we are spending money to put cameras in police cars, it was good to see that we actually, they work. So.
It was actually, although we have the same camera system, the, but I want to give credit where credit's due, the footage they used on the news was from the Cypress car as it just showed up at the scene to assist also.
Okay, fine.
Were they borrowing one of our cams?
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
Chief, did we get the name of the citizens that helped, by any chance?
I'm, I'm sure their names were, were, were taken by, by Cypress, who's actually handled this incident.
Okay, are they going to be giving those people any kind of accommodations? Because if not, I would like for us to invite them here, being that they assisted one of our police officers. Something tragic could have happened if that wash had been stronger, could have swept both of them away.
I'll check for Cypress.
Great. Okay, that's all the announcements I have. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things to add. Thank you, Councilmember Mejia, for talking about the spending priorities and the return to the community. We are, as a staff, working on that. We're, we're going to, the, the idea right now is to utilize the Commissions as the, the forum to design the survey to the community. And we, staff had thought about emergency preparedness for the entire community as one of the goals for use of those funds. So it's nice to know we're in sync. Secondly, we're, three weeks from now will be our first budget workshop for the community. Believe it or not, it is budget season. May 7 at 5:00 PM is our first budget workshop. That will be, you know, right prior to the council meeting. So the community is involved there. And then we'll follow that with, two weeks later, May 21 at 5:00 PM, our second workshop. And then we'll, after that, we'll plan what, what we do in June, ultimately resulting in the adoption of the budget for next fiscal year. We have a number of street projects that are coming online. That report will be given in subsequent council meetings. But just real quick, the, the areas of town that we're looking at, that will be, just to let everyone know, street and traffic signal improvements, Humboldt and Cerritos intersection, that's long awaited. Access ramp improvements in the Carrier Row area, street improvements at Cali Lee and Corporate Center Drive, drainage improvements, Catella and Siboney, and then street improvements at Villa El Mercado. So we can, the whole community can look forward to that. And then Recreation Community Services is online with soliciting donations to ensure that we have a great Fourth of July coming up. So that's in, in the works. Also, Roberts Park, which is the tiny little parcel behind the youth center. If you haven't had a chance to go back there and, and look, it has been, there is a brand-new seating area and just a, just a total improvement of the area that developed by donation that the youth center had solicited and received. And then it was designed and built by our Public Works Crew. So tomorrow night is the, the youth center celebration for their fundraising effort. And then everyone will have a chance to, to look at the improvements to Roberts Park. So that's all I have.
And she can ask you, you were talking about the improvements projects. It's been brought to my attention, the flood control channel in, in Old Dutch. I'd heard that we were approved for funding. They were trying to find a staging area to do work. Is, is that project still in motion?
We just talked about that today as a staff. So Dave, would you mind giving an update?
No, not at all. Yeah, that project is still going forward. They're scheduled, the county is scheduled to go out to bid with that job in, in September of this year. We have been negotiating an area in Cottonwood Park for them to use as a staging area. This is a project that the city has requested over the last eight or nine years for them to do. And they're, we're very grateful they're finally doing that. So we're cooperating, giving them a staging area for them to use and keep it out of the public streets and get them into an area that they won't be disrupting the, the main use of the park, but still let them get the project done. So it's all going forward. They'll probably be, say, going out to bid, like I say, in September and start construction, probably in January, February. But depends on how it rains. They may delay that till March or April, knowing how things go. It all depends what kind of year we're going to have next year.
Are you guys still using the park so that you can kind of fit in a potential update to the parking lot? Or because of all the rock and the debris that you're going to put on the concrete there?
What we're trying to do is get them to, to give us an area there that we might want to improve the parking lot or expand maybe the basketball court a little bit to, to do some improvements when they're done. They'll, they'll have it nicely smoothed off for us to do some improvements on our own.
Okay, great, thank you. City Attorney, anybody else have any comments? Okay. We're going to go ahead and adjourn to our next city council meeting on May 7, 2012. We're adjourned. Thank you.